This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. We will call this meeting of the Jefferson City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Brandle.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Fire.
Here.
Niles.
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium and state your name, address, for the record, and reason for appearing.
Hello, my name is Sharon Schmeling. I live at 333 Brickyard Court in town. Hello. First of all, thank you all, and thank you Cindy Keller for the hard work you do every day to help our city, and the work you're doing on the nature preserve, which I live alongside and I support. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention as you deliberate on the proceedings for the plans for that. The map shows, and you have the map, probably not in front of you, but you have it in your possession. The map shows a path around the nature preserve. It's got a 25-foot buffer. The map does a good job of delineating that. It shows a path going around the tree grove, which would be on the far side of the nature preserve, which is near our properties. It is still far away. But I'm curious why we're not going to use the existing path that goes from the street to the shed, which I know you're going to tear down. It's already been, it's old, obviously 17 or 20 years old, hasn't been taken care of. But there's some asphalt there and gravel, and it's already existing. So in the interest of resource management, the cheapest way to go would be to work with what you already have there. So I just want to make a pitch for that. Then the other question I had for you to think about is, I know there's plans to use asphalt or concrete maybe for, or blacktop for that path. And I'm wondering why you're looking at that as opposed to wood chips or something, which are better for the groundwater, less runoff, it's more affordable for the city. So I'd make a pitch for a little bit more environmentally sensitive pathway there. And then, the plan for that portion of the nature preserve is wild grasses, because we've been told, somewhat accurate, that most people won't see that side of the nature preserve because the path will be closer into the, it's hard to describe without a map, closer into the existing golf course, where you're going to have prettier flowers. And so then we'd make another pitch to the neighbors and I, that you would have the path on the inside of the tree grove. Because if you're not going to have pretty flowers for us to look at in our properties, then there aren't going to be pretty flowers for the people who are walking either. And you'd be able to simultaneously use the existing pathway and be on the inside of the tree grove. And I've talked to Cindy about that. She's been very receptive. And I know that the plants aren't in stone yet, but I just want to bring this to your attention to let you know that that's a concern of those of us in Brickyard Court, who would have that back end of the nature preserve as our part of our far backyard. And then, let's see, I know I only have three minutes, so we're going to go here. Oh, and then I'd make a pitch that you consider having friends in the nature preserve. The neighbors and I are all interested in helping support this endeavor, and we can do some fundraising and other things, help take care of it, kind of a neighborhood watch. When I was in county government, typically the corp council would develop some kind of bylaws and structure for the organization, so the city would have kind of a little bit of influence on how that was set up. Put up friendly seed money in the Jefferson Foundation for the Friends of the Nature Preserve. And then that would be an incentive to get us to raise some more money and help fund benches and other things that you would agree would be nice assets for the community. And I'd be interested in helping with that if that's the direction one goes as city leaders. And then the final pitch is, and the reason I'm here, for the main reason I'm here tonight is the maintenance. I know you just added a park position, and I appreciate that. Because we also live, our cul-de-sac also is across from the River Central Nature Preserve. And sometimes that's not always kept up. And I think it's mainly because of your limited staffing that you have. There's a lot of dandelions here now. There are a couple of bolt launches that are just sitting in the grass. They're not on the river. They've been there forever, collecting weeds and other debris. So we just want to, you know, if we're going to have another nature preserve, we need to keep it up. And we need to keep up one we already have. So I just make a pitch to encourage you to help provide the resources so the Parks Department can do that effectively. It'll just make our city look better. So, thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Sharon. We appreciate your comments. This is not a question-and-answer format.
Okay, very good.
But we appreciate your comments and your input. And you're certainly welcome to contact, work with Cindy and Bill on the suggestions. Maybe they can provide, I'm sure they can provide answers to some of the questions that you have with regard to the logic that went into the layout. I can just tell you that the one on the path, that's really an ADA issue. So in order to provide this and make this available for as many people as possible, that's why we're going to have a, okay, the service.
Good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
My name is Jan Johnstone. I live at 214 South Friends Avenue in Jefferson, Wisconsin. I do want to say thank you to Chief and Ron Wagner, our chief of the fire department. The COVID response from you guys were awesome. You guys kept our elderly safe. We have all those St. Coletta homes. You kept our community safe. I do want to point out that it was told to me that there was a city health ordinance a few weeks ago. And I know I spoke about it twice before, but I want you guys to understand that the health ordinance was over on February 14th. And the state legislator had taken, and they had removed all the health emergencies from the state of Wisconsin. So it's a false representation of a matter of fact, whether by words or conduct, by false or misleading allegations, or by concealment of what should have been disclosed. It deceives and is intended to deceive another so that an individual will act upon it to hurt his legal injury. Having signs up that say masks are required in any public building is still saying that we are under an epidemic, which we are not. Again, state, the Senate Joint Resolution Aspire 3 was passed on February 14th. And it terminated all of the public health emergencies. So there should be no more mask signs up in any public building at all. Also, regarding an epidemic here in the city of Jefferson, I do have a graph from the health department that shows as of April 30th, there were only three cases of COVID, and they were confirmed and/or probable. So they're not even saying that all three were confirmed cases, and that's for the entire county of Jefferson. And I do want to point out also with Wisconsin, Chapter 323 Emergency Order that was used to make the health ordinance here in town, it's limited, 323-411 limits it to during the emergency conditions exist or are likely to exist. I think with three cases in that county, I think we can pretty much say the epidemic is over. And also, just so you know, the federal law for the emergency use of masks, no person can really be forced to wear a mask. They were never tested, even the FDA says that they were never tested to be used for the general public. So I just am asking the city council, I know you're having a discussion tonight, to please do the right thing. Let's open up our little city, and let's, our kids should have celebrated on February 14th. They beat this thing. And if they're not able to celebrate, let's let them celebrate. We beat this COVID thing. It's been proven. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
My name is Ken Pledgie, 226 East Johns Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin. Mayor Offerman's going to be reading a proclamation tonight for National Police Week, which is May 5th out of the 14th. It's coming up next week. First off, I want to thank the city council and the citizens of Jefferson for the tremendous support that they show to the Jefferson Police Department and all of our emergency services. Being in law enforcement this past year and into this year has been very, very difficult for a lot of us. And we, thank goodness, have seen just a small section of that with some of the hostility that's directed towards us based on, I think, a lot of false media information that's put out there, and a lot of false data that's put out there that people don't seem to care about. I just wanted to let you know that, and to keep this in perspective, and I'll keep my comments brief, Mayor. 2019, we lost 150 police officers. 2020, we lost 362 police officers in the line of duty. 2021, we're at 119 so far. 2017, we had 140 commit suicide. 2019, we had 228. We've had 56 so far, and one in Wisconsin. Those are very, very alarming numbers. We're starting to get back in the 1970s. I think some of the groups out in society are beginning to realize that we don't have the backing, which means even more that I have the backing of you folks here at the city council, and our community members that understand how dangerous our job can be. We've lost in the last five years 1,185 souls as officers. And the last 10 years, we've lost almost 2,000. In American history since 1791, that was the first recorded police officer death, we've lost 24,871 officers in our country. I say this stuff to you because in Wisconsin, we've lost 297 police officers. You all mostly know my son's a Milwaukee policeman. Milwaukee alone has lost 66 police officers since their inception. So at the end of the day, I just wanted to let you know, Jefferson County, we've lost two officers. It really means a lot, the support we get, not just the financial support, but the tremendous comments that we get from the council members when I see out in the city, as well as the community members and the backing that we get here at the police department. As you all know, I've come back, I've come with you guys time and time again trying to hire people, talk to my own boss, criminal justice training, college enrollments are dropping through the floor. Nobody wants to do this job. So it really means that the support is tremendous. And I'll leave you with one last thing, Mayor. There's a Bible passage I like to say. It's that, "Blessed are the peacekeepers, for they shall be called the children of God." Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Something I'd like to share here that came to my attention this last weekend. On Saturday, May 1st, a senior high class celebrated the prom at Rotary Park. Due to the pandemic, this class was denied a prom their junior and senior year. However, a group of seniors, including Brock Pinault, Preston Rutherford, Aaron Heim, Carson Fairfield, and Heather Fox, took it upon themselves to put on their own prom. They planned and organized a student-run senior prom this past Saturday. This group of students coordinated with the Parks Department, Police Department, and school officials to run a safe, organized event. Any money beyond the needed expenses will be donated to the Jefferson County Humane Society on behalf of the 2021 senior class. We have some pictures here. I just personally like to add that this is not only a source of great pride for the people who live in our community, but this is also kind of a nod to the next group of leaders that are coming up. And I really applaud these young people for taking it upon themselves, putting on a safe and fun event this past Saturday night. And I couldn't be prouder of them and wish them all the best.
I'll pass that up. Thank you.
Please do. Next, we'll have an update on EMS Director Sue Ryan's pending retirement.
Mayor Offerman, please swear.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We need a swearing. President Brandle.
Sorry.
That's right. Sorry, we got to say that.
Sorry, Mr. Brandle.
No, we'll get it.
Stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bill Brandle.
I, Bill Brandle.
Have been elected to the office of Alderperson at large.
Having been elected to the office of Alderperson at large.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the municipal code of the city of Jefferson.
And the municipal code of the city of Jefferson.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brandle, and congratulations on being elected council president once again. Now we'll move on to an update on the pending retirement.
Thanks, Mayor. I think you have a copy of Sue's letter in your electronic packet. But if not, it's very short. I'll just read it really quickly. It's addressed to myself and the city council members. This letter represents my official notice of retirement from my position of EMS director with the city of Jefferson. My final day of work will be 6 July 2021. It has been a pleasure to work with Tim, the mayor, council members, EMTs, and medics that serve the citizens of the city of Jefferson and strong communities to provide emergency medical services. I am very proud of the team that we have developed. They are very dedicated and conscientious. They get out of bed in the middle of the night to help people. Often, it is one of the worst days of a patient's life. I am willing to help Chief Wagner, his assistant chiefs, and the full-time medics after my retirement. It's not on the agenda tonight. I would just simply say that I think we knew this day was coming with Sue. And there has been some discussions, some meetings. I would think the next meeting to talk about successor plans would be when Ron gets back from California. He's out dealing with a medical situation with his granddaughter. I think he's back about the middle of May, so I would imagine, you know, we would meet collectively with you and talk about what does that next plan look like.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Tim?
Sue will be a big loss for the community. She's dedicated herself entirely to this. I think that's going to be real hard to replace.
Okay, let's move on to an update on the new zoning ordinance.
Just really quickly, I can share this piece with you. In your electronic packet, there was a letter. We sent out 400 and some copies of that letter to different addresses. Those are the people that would propose to be downzoned that we talked about. I don't know when that was. A month or so ago. So the letters are written. They're in the mail. No doubt, they would have been delivered by this time. There's two key dates in the letter that I want to make you aware of. On May 19th, that is when there is an open forum, when people that would have got this letter, or anyone else for that matter, can come in on a somewhat informal basis, talk about their situation with our consultants. Bill and I will be there. You're certainly welcome to join us. But it's not imperative that you're there to try to resolve any issue they may have from the proposed new zoning ordinance. And then the second key date is June 22nd. That's a Tuesday, but it's an off meeting night. I think that's the fourth Tuesday of June. That is when we've set a joint Plan Commission-City Council Public Hearing, which is statutorily a requirement to put a new zoning ordinance in place. So that is a key date. We obviously need a quorum from new folks to be able to hold a public hearing. So May 19th and June 22nd are the next key dates in process to put a new zoning ordinance in place.
You want to tie this to it?
5:00 to 7:00 is the public.
Open House.
I believe it's 5:00 to 7:00.
Yep, and the June 22nd public hearing would be at 5 o'clock right after a 4:30 Plan Commission meeting.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions, Tim? Hearing none. Next, I'll move on to a proclamation for the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, of 2021 National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Jefferson play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Jefferson and the citizens. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Jefferson unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Dale Offerman, Mayor of the city of Jefferson, call upon all citizens of Jefferson and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established themselves as enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Jefferson to remember all law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes dated this fourth day of May 2021. Please join me in a moment of silence in recognition of those who have died. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to ordinance number 4-21. In amending ordinance 4-21, liquor license to premises where the sale of gasoline is conducted or carried on. Alderman Lars, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson City, ordinance number 4-21. Whereas the city of Jefferson now prohibits the issuance of Class A intoxicating liquor license to the purposes where the gas, where the sale of gasoline is conducted or carried on. And whereas the city of Jefferson finds that such prohibition is no longer proper due to the change of, to how such businesses are now conducted. Now therefore, the common council does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, Section 160-5 parent al is hereby deleted in its entirety. Section 2, the ordinance shall be effective on the date after its enactment and publication of this ordinance as required by law. I so move.
Obviously, this is a first reading, and thank you. We'll bring this back for future considerations. Resolution number four, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Fire, please.
I, will marry council members and citizens, city of Jefferson, resolution number four. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for May 4th, 2021 is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for May 2021 in the amounts of $187,552. Payroll summary for April 23rd, 2021 in the amount of $163,496. Council minutes from April 20th, 2021 of the common council and organizational minutes of the common council. Closure of the Firehouse Alley for May 4th for Jefferson Chamber of Commerce. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We had three operators licensed, Cameron Bruskowski for Main Street Station, Julia Dandoy for Jefferson Golf, and Matthew P.T. for Rock Bottom. Sales of goods on the right-of-way for Friends of Goat Island for May 8th and August 14th for Goat Test and Special Class B. Picnic license for May Ball on the May 15th and Camila Kite Days on September 17th through the 19th. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lars. Any discussion? Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of passages of tonight's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Know if you're opposed, or please abstain if you are not attendance.
Alderman Brandle.
I have an extension for the minutes.
Lars?
I have the extension of the minutes.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution number five, a resolution authorizing audiovisual improvements for municipal building meeting rooms. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, resolution number five. Authorizing audiovisual improvements for the municipal building meeting rooms. Whereas the approved city of Jefferson careful improvement budget contains a $25,000 appropriation to fund various audiovisual improvements project for the meeting rooms located at the Jefferson Municipal Building. And whereas this project was initially scheduled to be completed in fiscal year 2020, but was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the project includes the installation of 286-inch display monitors, nine-inch ceiling speakers, wireless microphones, and an assisted listening system for hearing impaired individuals. And whereas city and library staff solicited proposals from area companies that specialize in the installation of audiovisual improvements and recommends the selection of Wisconsin Audio Video Incorporated of Madison, Wisconsin to supply the equipment. Installation and training required to complete the project at a cost of $22,148.46. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the recommendation and concurs that the Wisconsin Audio Video Incorporated is a low-qualified bidder and is recommending approval of the project as it supports the city and library mission of serving the community. And now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves the proposal of Wisconsin Audio Video Incorporated of Madison, Wisconsin at a cost of $22,148.46 to install various audiovisual improvements in the municipal building meeting rooms and authorizes the city administrator to execute any contract or paperwork required for said project to proceed upon review and approval of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Alderman Tully. Discussion?
Review by finance.
Can I ask to review it? It moves unanimously, so it's putting forward to the council.
Questions or comments? Obviously, it'll be a great improvement for this room and the various groups that use this. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of resolution number five, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number six, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the development, installation, and installation of the nature conservancy. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, resolution number six, authorizing award of contract for development and installation of conservancy. Whereas the city of Jefferson received four bids from contractors interested in developing and installing the conservancy material at the former Meadow Springs Golf Course site. And whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. Midwest Prairies, $81,141.25. Applied Ecological Service, $98,800.63. Quirkus Land Stewardship, $89,184. And Good Oak LLC, $106,282.60. Whereas the overall scope of the project includes the establishment of a diverse array of native grasses, sedges, wildflowers, shrubs, and trees in a naturalistic setting, minimizing long-term maintenance costs and creating a safe and accessible space for passive recreation. And whereas installation of the asphalt path and stormwater retention ponds will be completed under separate contracts. And whereas the finance committee has reviewed and approved this project. And whereas city staff has reviewed the project bid results and recommend award of the base bid for the development and installation of the conservancy to Midwest Prairies as the low-qualified bidder in the amount of $81,141.25. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the Midwest Prairies bid for the development and installation of a conservancy at the former Meadow Springs Golf Course in the amount of $81,141.25. And further directs and authorizes the city administrator to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson upon review and consent of the city attorney. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Alderman Brandle. Discussion?
Finance also reviewed this, and it was well known. The budget did demote. Unanimously recommend the, to the council.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
It's unanimous to recommend the to the council.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
Cindy, do you know when this will start?
Um, once the contract is approved, we should start mid-May.
Mid-May?
Yep, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. That's the question I have.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next, we'll have a discussion and on the emergency COVID nineteen order and possible action. We have this discussion at the committee of the whole. I think you've had a presentation from Administrator Freitag and Chief Pledgie on what their roles have been since the beginning of the pandemic and continuing on through the present time and in the future. I think I just would like to offer that my personal perspective and appreciation for the day-to-day decision-making that these two gentlemen have done over the last year plus. I've been involved in a lot of the conversations, but their leadership is what brought us through this pandemic and kept mask gatherings and church services open, outdoor events, and not the least of which, in-person city council meetings. Not every community has done that and some of them still aren't doing it. I'm very proud of both the leadership of our emergency government officials and the council for taking a leadership role in this and doing, performing your jobs in a safe environment, but we remained open. Our city employees stayed on the job. We did not pay people to stay home and not work. We made accommodations and that's a credit to all the city department heads for making accommodations with their respective workforce because not only did we continue to keep working here, but we made some great accomplishments within the last year and we have some other greater accomplishments yet to move it forward here, not the least of which is significant construction projects like the Spangler subdivision and Plymouth Street reconstruction and the Meadow Springs Nature Conservancy. This isn't happening in communities that just decided to fold up and not take this on a year ago. So I'm very proud of the, not only the leadership that we continue to have, but also the leadership amongst the council members here because I think we really have tried to keep Jefferson open and safe for all the people that both live here or work here and certainly those that come here to patronize our businesses. I think these in-person meetings have led to a great deal of productivity, both at the council level and at the staff level, and I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate the efforts of all the staff. That being said, I don't think we're out of danger yet. We are in a position where certain precautions need to be taken, certain decisions need to be made on a regular basis and ongoing basis. And so I would think that it would be not in the city's best interest to discontinue this order at this time. Any questions or comments from the council members?
I would totally agree with Mayor on this. I think it was said well and it was well thought out. I also congratulate the management team, especially Tim and Chief. They've done a really good job and things have worked well so far. No sense in taking a chance of something else happening. I always think the state of Oregon, which had the lowest rate of COVID in the nation until a week ago, and now is getting hit by a whole new wave. They let their guard down. And I think until we know, we're sure what's going on, we take it day by day and see what happens. So I certainly agree with Mayor on this, that we should continue.
I think, I think with the update that we got, I think we've learned that there's things that are going on daily that we probably didn't know about, not that we needed to know, just like there's things going on daily in people that have businesses that you take care of to keep your businesses running because you have to. And in a way, that's what these two gentlemen are doing. There are important things that need to be done to keep our employees safe and to keep the community safe. And we're not imposing some, we're not requiring people to wear masks. If you read that sign carefully, it says, please put on a mask. We're, you know, that's all we're asking people, to please put on a mask. You know, we're not going to tackle them and put a mask on their face. We're asking them to please put one on. We're, you know, we want their employees, they work in a very small space. That, that's, right there, that's a safety issue. We're going to be able to go outside. We can, you know, have our celebrations outside. We'll be opening up Rotary Parks on Saturday. That's fantastic. This summer, we'll be, we'll have our concerts in the park. We're going to be doing things like that, getting back to normal, and that'd be fantastic. But we're not doing this totally out craziness where I think other communities are too crazy and then I think things got back worse. I think Tim and the chief are watching things, especially the people in the city workforce and our running this, and we need them because they're right there. We can't be there. I work, you have, you guys have a business to run. We need to be doing our stuff. That's what we pay them to do. And so I think this is working well. Until they tell us and come back and say, you don't need us to be doing this. I like the idea of getting updates on it. You know, I think that's good. You know, I don't know if we want it monthly or how, you know, tell us how it's going so we know, you know, what's the improvement going, you know, what are the steps, how's it going, you know, what differences are. But right now, I think they're doing a great job. That's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments?
First of all, I will echo Mayor's comments regarding the Chief and Tim, our city administrator, for working on the order number three and keeping it enforced. I think it was obviously very necessary. I totally understand the idea about, as we only meet once every two weeks, that we can't, you can't come to us for every little thing that you need all the time. That would have been redundant and a waste of time and money on everybody's part. I do have a couple of questions. With that being said, what, what if anything, does this order have to do with the schools?
The schools, the school board basically is pretty much on their own. They each make their own decision. As you can see, there's a lot of, there's checkered board all over the place and it creates a lot of controversy and we have nothing to say about the school board. We look at it like the rest of the businesses, Chip, is that basically they make the decisions themselves. The city doesn't impose anything upon them, which they should. That's my opinion.
So it has nothing to do with the schools? And then my other question is, you mentioned before when we were in the committee of the whole that obviously the city signs out here and the doors now say, please wear a mask. It doesn't say not to wear it. You commented about that workplace environment that, I don't want to call it a uniform, but that that will still be enforced even if we say no to this order. So this is, this has nothing to do, voting on this has nothing to do with masks?
I don't know.
Well, when you said that, like, for instance, that you can still in the workplace require not a uniform, but you can require a workplace environment.
For some protective equipment.
Protective equipment. And I'm not necessarily talking about the police department per se, I'm talking about the senior center, the library, the offices in there. Does this ordinance, if, vote no, does this negate masks being worn in those offices? Or, or is that still a workplace and we can dictate what our workers wear?
I think the answer to that is, it be a council determination what happens in those other facilities. So.
By this ordinance or separate from the order?
If you, if you repeal the order because what's in place now was done with the authority ceded to Ken and I, if the ordinance is rescinded, then I think you'll have to decide how you want to treat those facilities, the ones you just mentioned.
Okay. And, and if we continue this ordinance, is there a timeline for a review on whether it's still necessary or not?
I think like when we talked before is that with the citywide emergency management plan, I mean, we talked about the four different phases when we go from, you know, the response to the recovery, is that obviously the end, it says, what is recovery identified as? And we kind of had that conversation about what was the pre-emergency or the pre-pandemic numbers, which are zero. Now Al brought up the fact of the flu and other things that can be attributed to that. That's totally understandable, but the way we looked at it is it's consistent with the citywide emergency management plan, statutorily backed, ordinance backed. The authority was given to us by the mayor and the council to put it into place. At the end of the day, I think revisiting it on a regular basis and taking a look at where the stats are, again, I, it's great and Jan brought up how old the numbers are. I track those all the time. I think it's really good. We're going in the right direction, but the bottom line is it's, it's still there. So, and I don't have a crystal ball to say, I love being able to tell you, you know, Chip, May thirtieth, this, this is done because everybody, I get it, I get it. So, but I think until we really, it plateaus and flattens out, that's probably going to be the data-driven thing. And right now, I would say is, what is the harm leaving it in place right now? You know, if we, just for the foreseeable future, if you want to revisit it thirty days or sixty days or whatever, you know, then we could, we, absolutely, we could do that and we could make a determination then where we can bring it back some of the data and say, hey, we're down to zero paces in Jefferson in the last ten days. So, but that's going to be something that I think you guys ultimately get to decide. I recommend against it right now because I don't think we are out of the woods yet. I think we're going the right way. I mean, thank goodness for vaccinations and everything else going on, but I still think there does, it does pose dangers. There are still hospitalizations, there's still, you know, there's still, sometimes there's deaths yet and we, we're smart about it. We know the vulnerable populations. We know sixty-five, you know, people with health issues. We're really getting good about it, but you lift this and you say, no. The council decides, senior center, no, you guys don't need to have it. And now you have somebody come in and unwittingly, and you have the whole vaccination argument besides that. And boy, oh, boy, that's the most vulnerable population from a city standpoint that we have. So I wish I could answer it, but I would say you go back to the pre-emergencies and it was pretty flat on a zero. I don't know what that looks like. I, I'm sorry, I don't have another answer for you, Chip.
So I think, Chip, the really short answer to, I think, what your question is, if at any time you don't agree with Tim and Ken, simple majority vote of the council can rescind this ordinance. One week, two weeks, six months, you know, it's really whenever you want it rescinded.
Chris, I just have a question for you. Our, our city ordinance supersedes the state, correct?
Yeah, we, we enacted the, the order under a separate state statute that is distinct from the state one.
So just because the state rescinded their, or had to rescind their mask mandate, doesn't mean we have to abide by that. We have our own.
Yeah, the state statute said that the governor could declare an emergency that's good for sixty days and if it's to be extended beyond that, the legislature would have to agree. They never agreed and the state Supreme Court shot it down when the governor tried to extend it. But again, that is a different enabling ordinance than the one that we've used, correct?
Can you tell again, like, what were the statistics for Jefferson County again?
Oh, there is, um, I can't even list them, um, that we've had. Um, you know, I've stuck out here again, that's okay though.
So I just think it's, I think it's going to be around here.
Okay. So, so right now, just generally, so we had positive cases in the state, seven hundred and twenty-one yesterday. This is as of five-four. We got twenty-eight hundred negative, near twenty-eight hundred negative. When we take a look at, we take a look at hospitalizations, hospital beds are eighty-two percent in use right now, ICU are eighty-four percent. There's seven point two percent hospitals at peak capacity right now, twenty-two point six with ICUs at peak capacity, and hospitals with medical surgical units are twelve point five. We're averaging, in Wisconsin, five-one was a good day. It was a hundred and fifty-one cases. It's averaging a ten-day average of four hundred and sixty. And I, Jan, your, your data was four thirty, right? So that was, there was one case there, but I think as of today, and I don't have it, I can't jump on it, there, in Jefferson County, there were just, there were a few cases. So it is, the numbers are going in a great direction. They're really going in the right direction, but to President Brandl's point is, you just don't know where a hotspot shoots up and we're trying to open up. The car show was a tremendous success and that, I mean, it's, we're trying to open up, but you just never know. You just don't know. You know what? You have people that believe in vaccines, those that don't believe in them. So, I mean, it is what it is. So it's a better safe than sorry. I don't want to lose anybody else and I know there's other things out there, there's food, things like that that are out there that kill people too, but this thing is, just, this really took the wind out of our sails and I think if we can prevent it, ounce of prevention is worth a public cure any day.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I think that, that this should, this should be, we, we went far too long without updates, I will say that. This is the first one we've had in months. So I would like it if we were updated at every single meeting, you know, council meeting, and that the discussion be put on the agenda at every single meeting until it is rescinded. If it's not rescinded today, which I kind of don't see it happening, but just to let the opportunity is there because many times if you want to discuss something, you're told it's not on the agenda. So I'd like to see that on the agenda every single council meeting from here forward until the point where it is rescinded and get an update at every single council meeting so that we all really are apprised of what's going on. I, I don't think that's a whole lot to ask there.
Well, I've been getting updates weekly for the past year plus, so I'm sure that's something that Chief Pledgie can share with anyone who's interested in getting forward to their. I just don't, I don't, I don't know that I agree with your logic of putting it on every agenda until it goes away.
Well, the problem with it, it takes.
Well, this is the first time it came up in fourteen months. That's my thing.
Plus, it's got to be on the agenda and it's got to be read next. It, it takes, like, we've been talking about this for, this is our third meeting. We've been talking about it without any action having been taken yet. So I think that's your, your thoughts, that if, if it becomes another issue, you go another six weeks before anything gets talked about.
Right, and then the opportunity is there to rescind it. Or at least, I don't mind getting an update, you know, it only took thirty seconds to read an update. And if there's no discussion, there's no discussion, but if there, the opportunity should be there. I mean, if we're under an emergency management situation, it shouldn't be taken lightly. It should be something that could be discussed at any meeting.
What else do I, with the mayor's permission, E O C reports, Mayor, that are biweekly now from the county that we're part of, I'll forward those to every single council member's email, if that's all right, if that, because that way you can take a look at the state data and the Jefferson data and that way it might, it'll give you a little bit more basis of kind of how we're planning to plug it into our emergency management plan and now forward moving forward. The resume.
Do it that way and then you can decide whether you want to put it on the agenda, get that first and then do it.
That would, that would be fine, you know, as long as it doesn't fall, I guess, fall off the table and not be discussed for months on end.
This was put on for discussion at the first request.
that Chief shares, I welcome you to request it before the agendas begin. But that's, just to put something on for the sake of putting it on perpetually is not the way we do business.
All right, that's fine, as long as, if all I have to do is ask you, that's great.
Anyone wish to offer a motion at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Tully, Mr. Miller, on a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.